Good morning. It's Monday, September 21, 2020, 9:00 AM. And the Kirk County Commissioners Court is now in session. I have my mask with me, but this is the first Commissioners Court hearing that we have where Kirk County is exempt from the mandatory mask as long as we keep our active cases under 20. And with that, I want to remind everybody to turn your cell phones off. I have my cellphone here, and anyone that would like to call in for any input to the county, just call 830-792-6161. That'll vibrate right here by me. Okay, with that, the next part of the agenda is public input. Every time we meet, we have an opportunity for the public to address the court. We ask that you identify yourself, your address, and limit your remarks to three minutes. And I have Mr. Wirt as filed his request to speak to the court. And you may remove your mask while you speak.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you. Judge Kelly, good to see you as well. Conrad Wirt in 814 Lee Street here in Precinct 1. And the reason I wanted to talk today were some of the going-ons of last Monday, and really just for clarification, just for transparency, because I know you, as elected officials within the court, want to hear from your constituents. I remember hearing on your radio show, Commissioner Blue, from Bob and Nadine, that you have 60,000 bosses. And I mean that respectfully, not in any antagonizing manner. Some of the clarification I was wanting to understand is with the proposed salary of the 2020-2021 year with the unanimous vote of 5 to 0, showed on the agenda items last week that there were allotments, maybe it's cost of living adjustments or pay raises, depending on how that's considered, for department heads. But I was wondering if that also included county employees? And I was unsure if that's something that can be clarified by the court. Many of these are general questions that I understand that you can't always respond to, but just thoughts from what I'm hearing within constituents and residents within my community, there in Precinct 1, Commissioner Blue. Also, when Commissioner, I'm sorry, Judge Kelly, when you were sharing about the approved budget for 2020-2021, you did mention that VSOs and volunteer fire departments were being allotted funds. But when looking at the agenda items, once again, on the actual proposed budget, I was trying to see where that was allotted. And once again, that's only being in contact with, you know, our volunteer fire department there in Turtle Creek, as they've shared concerns of how to move forward with what's best allotted by the county. One question that I hear time and time again from residents is why are meetings only held at 9:00? I'm assuming as a school teacher, it's based on work schedule, simply because you have so many staff involved. But that might be a wonderful thing to clarify for constituents, because they would love to come and share, but, for example, I had to take off today to just share my concerns as a constituent. I think it'd be wonderful to be transparent on why that's the case. Regarding the COVID-19 emergency now being lifted, I was wondering, and you might mention that today within this session, does that change the proposed policy of the allocation for hazard pay in the Sheriff's Department? I remember you mentioned that last Monday. If we lift this, is there going to be enough grant money to address that? I've heard that from a lot of constituents in my neighborhood as well. And lastly, and I mean this respectfully, what do you recommend is the best way for us as voters to voice our concerns without fear of retribution? You know, unfortunately, Commissioner Blue, you and I did have a bit of an exchange, which in no way did I mean ill will towards you, but for whatever reason, you decided to comment that on your private radio station the following day. The only point I'm making there is not to antagonize the court in any way. It's to say, I'm a resident of Precinct 1, and I hear from my neighbors as a resident and speaking solely as a constituent. I know these types of questions would be wonderful to help with the court's transparency and the confidence in the court. Thank you so much for your time. Is the response or no, Judge Kelly?
We're not permitted to respond to her.
Very good. Very good. I was just going for the last experience.
This is our opportunity to listen to the public. We've heard you.
Appreciate it.
But we can't respond.
Very good. Have a good day.
Thank you.
But you can put it all on the agenda.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Fair enough. Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Blue, Precinct 1.
We got rain. It was nice a little this morning. And just a nice weekend. I'll let, I'll leave to Commissioner Harris to talk about the turnout for the hazardous waste, but I was there and brought mine.
Good. Precinct 2.
I too yield to Commissioner Harris on that, but I was there a couple of times. The other thing is, I have a little issue in Precinct 2 on Flat Rock Park, and that's the property that's adjacent to the Dog Park, north of the Dog Park. There's a fence there, but it doesn't go all the way to the creek. People trespass onto that personal property, and so I've asked Shane to consider, probably come back to the court, of put some signs up, say, county property ends, okay? Because I don't think you can run the fence all the way to the creek. It's creating a problem for that gentleman owns that property, so that's all I have.
Three.
I don't believe I have anything this morning.
Well, hazardous waste event went well Saturday. Commissioners Court was well represented. Three of us were there. Mr. Moser came through twice. I tell you, I couldn't believe the numbers. The first, third minute, 165 cars went through the building. And the county organized the outside, the city did the inside, and it worked great. We worked great together on that event. All told, there's about 500 cars that came through, and got lots and lots of tires, plenty of paint, and everything else. I mean, it was well attended. Even Mr. Moser, when you were there, there's a lot of cars there, but, boy, it went fast. It was organized. So hats off to everybody who participated and brought in their stuff, and it was a great event for both the county and the city.
For clarification, there was never three of us there at the same time.
So no, no.
No corner.
Open meetings, issues.
Very good.
Okay, well, with that, let's go ahead and start our agenda. Item 1.1, Consider Discuss to Take Appropriate Action Regarding a National and Global Day of Prayer Event Scheduled for September 26th, this coming Saturday on the courthouse grounds. Ms. Graves.
Good morning to all. Thank you so much for allowing me to come in. I do apologize that I had not been here sooner. I was not made aware right away that I was supposed to be here, but I'm glad I could be here today. Yes, we have been in contact with Kim Rhodes, who initially set up this National and Global Day of Prayer event for the 26th, and she's the one that has the signs already posted out here in front of the courthouse. And so all that we are doing is joining that. I've been in contact with her for now, for the last couple of weeks, and we are just joining our efforts. We just wanted a little bit more time, so we are going to need time to set up, but we are going to start the event at 9:00 in the morning. And so we'd like to be here about 8:00 to get everything set up. I also think that Kim has asked if county, I believe it's county maintenance, she told me, is providing chairs and access to electricity if possible, and maybe some of the cones, just to kind of put out where we're going to have a platform area. It's, I think, just a trailer that someone is allowing us to borrow to be able to have our sound system and everything on. And so if we could just have access to those things as well, we're going to allow, or after our event time, they just stay on the ground for her. So it lessens the time that she has to have to set up, even though we'll still want the same amount of time, you know, that she has put on her schedule. We just, it would be less happen to take down and put back up. But anyway, if that's possible, that's what we're asking for. And then, again, it's just going to be along the same lines as what she has come forth and said, that it's a time of praying for our nation, for its leadership, for the people of this county and around the world. It's an event that's going on, not just here in Kirk County, of course. It's going on in DC right on that time, on the 26th as well. It's going to be, they're going to be having a live simulacast upon the mountain up here where the cross is, that's going to be showing us all of what's going on in DC. So that's going to be interesting as well. So there's a lot of things going on that day that I think is super important for us as people, as a nation, and it's going to be encouraging, it's going to be exciting. A lot of people are looking really forward to it. So I think the turnout's going to be good. We're going to have information. We will have some tables set up with some information there, just some things about there's a prayer guide we're going to use just to encourage people to not only pray for just that day, but we need it going on continually for our nation. And so, anyway, that's what I came to present, and if you have any questions for me.
Question, you kept referring to another event or another lady.
Yes. Okay, Kim's been here. Kim came last couple of weeks, Kim Rhodes, and she's the one that initially started what you see out on the sign out there.
Okay, good enough.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And so like I said, we were, her and I have been in contact together, and we're working together.
So you're asking to start a little earlier?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We'd like to start around 8:00. We'd like to be here about 8:00 to get set up, because, as I said, we had some tables we want to set up. Want to make sure the chairs and everything are set up properly. And then we have a platform that we're going to be setting up, a sound system, because we will have music and speakers at that time. And then we will start sharp at 9:00, and it'll last until 10:00 for us, and then after that, we'll do our cleanup time, and then she'll be coming on the scene to get her stuff set up as well. So, and again, just using the access of the chairs, the electricity, I think she had gotten that approved already with y'all.
So what does that change for maintenance? Being here early or y'all?
If that would be possible, we will be here at 8:00. I will be here. Yes, my husband and I both will.
Behind you two, you're right. Shane Evans, who is our head of maintenance. You just need to coordinate that with him.
Okay. Okay, so can I get a few later about that? Are you here in these offices as well, sir?
I'll be here in a minute.
You'll be here again?
Well, after we've approved it.
Okay. Is there a way I can give a telephone number with you and do that? That would be cool.
So do we need to take action?
I think we've already approved it for today.
We've already approved it, yeah.
Yeah, we can approve the events.
Maybe tweak the hours.
Just starting it out early.
Right. Other than just being here at 8:00, I mean, I know hers starts, I think, at actually 11:00, but she needed to set, she needed to have some setup time as well, so I think she had it as 10.
Just coordinate with Shane.
See, we needed to get, if this was on the agenda before, we passed it over because we needed the particulars and details.
If Kim starts at 11:00, and this is a, this is a, an event prior to her event.
Correct.
We probably do need to take action on that. This is a different, this is an addition to that event.
Well, I move for approval. Second.
What's been made by Commissioner Blue, second by Commissioner Harris, to approve modifications for the National and Global Day of Prayer, scheduled for September 26th, as presented and coordinated today? Is there any other discussion on this?
Beginning at 8:00.
Yes, sir.
Okay, those in favor, raise your hand. unanimous, 5 zebra. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Hope you have a great turnout.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, item 1.2, Presentation and Briefing by Workforce Solutions Alamo Regarding the 2020 and As 2024 Local Plan and Update on Unemployment Claims. Welcome Adrian Locas from San Antonio.
Thank you, Judge. Thanks, Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to present here today. So I know that when I first got hired back in November, I knew we were going to be up for a challenge with this organization. Certainly didn't bargain, you know, going through a pandemic and a couple of other crises. But when we first met, I promised that we would be coming back to you, and so I know that COVID kind of delayed a little bit of that. But we're here to provide just a quick briefing on where we are with unemployment numbers, as well as to talk a little bit about what we're starting to formalize as it relates to our local plan. So under the first slide, you will see a graphic associated, and you should have hard copies of the presentation in burning as well, if you wanted to make reference to it. So for the region, of course, Workforce Solutions Alamo covers the 13-county region, Barrett County being the urban hub, and of course, Kirk County is part of one of the 12 counties that we serve. The region, we have seen approximately 293,000 people who have filed for unemployment since March. You'll see the spikes that actually happened in the weeks of March and April. The good news is that, you know, since then, around, like, part of, early part of May, we started to see the unemployment claims start to actually take a dip. There was an uptick during the June timeframe, as we saw cases in communities like Barrett County that started to see a spike in COVID cases, and so that, of course, affected unemployment numbers just as well. But so far, in the last few weeks, we are seeing a steady decline. Under the next slide, you'll see the same type of information, but reflected by monthly basis. And so, of course, you'll see in April, approximately 109,000 claims, but since then have actually been reduced significantly. So, next slide.
Let's see, between August and September, it really plummeted from 33,000 to 6,000.
Well, September's, of course, that's just reflecting probably the first week of September, so we're still, it might still increase, but that's as a, probably the end of the first week of September.
And just to add, that coincides with exactly what happened here in Kirk County. That's when our active cases rates fell so low.
Yeah.
In August.
So this next slide will reflect the labor force pre-COVID. So of course, you have approximately 44,000 people who are working age, but the folks in the labor force, about 22,000 employed at the time. And this is basically reflecting numbers of 2019, about 21,800 or so, so you had about 588 unemployed folks during that time. Of course, the whole region was, apart prior to COVID, were experiencing historic lows of unemployment levels. Of course, after COVID, we saw a tremendous increase in unemployment rate. This next slide, you'll see how this is better reflected by year, so from about 2015 to the latter part of 2019, probably about 3.5% or around there, unemployment levels. And then, of course, you'll see that those increased in April, May, and June. The good news is that the current unemployment rate through approximately June is about 6%. So while you had a spike of almost probably 11.5% at its height in April, that has steadily gone down over the course of months, so that's good news. Next slide, you'll see how you are comparing in relation to the other 12 rural counties. And so in large part, Kamau and Luba County make up almost 55% of the total amount of claimants for the 12 rural counties. So Kirk County, you're reflecting approximately about 3,600 folks that file for unemployment that live in this county. Now, unemployment is tracked based on where people are living, not where they are working, right? So potentially, you have people that are living here, but maybe working in an adjacent county or something to that effect. But these reflect actually people who live in this particular community that file for unemployment. Under the next slide, you'll see the claimants by age, and this is a whole region, looking at approximately over 50% of the claimants are ages 15 to 34. So those have been consistently reflected throughout this whole time period, about the biggest sort of segment by age, folks who have filed for unemployment. Under the next slide, you'll see educational attainment. The reason we're putting this slide into is it'll be reflected in a subsequent point in a subsequent slide, but this reflects the number of folks who have, for example, less than a ninth-grade education, or ninth through 12, which means no high school diploma or GED, and then those that have a high school diploma and so on. That's important from the perspective of the next slide, which is when we look at the total amount of claimants for the region, a good portion of them are reflecting either a high school diploma or less, right? And so that also is affected by, based on the number of folks that are, lost their jobs in particular industries, which is actually reflected in the next slide. So for this county, as well as many other counties, retail, trade, food and accommodations, healthcare, and social services were the top three sectors or industries that were affected by these unemployment claims. Obviously, retail trade is associated with what's happening in relation to lack of tourism and those types of things, right? Food and accommodations is your restaurants and your hotels. So this is across the board. So your county is not necessarily different than other counties. There are some differences in other counties from the perspective of those, for example, that were in the southeast or south that were affected by the oil industry. So we had two crises that were going on. We had the COVID crisis, and then we had the oil bust that happened. And so in those counties, you actually see mining and oil and gas is actually one of those that's affected.
Question.
Yes, sir.
What's the source of information you have on educational attainment?
Yeah, I believe this came from the Census Bureau.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Good enough. Thanks.
Sure. So, of course, as we move forward, right, one of the challenges is going to be is trying to get people who may not have a high school diploma or GED back into the workplace, right? That's going to be a challenge associated, because some folks may have been working, for example, in food and accommodations because of, that's basically, you know, their level of skill set. So we understand the challenge associated with that. Under the next slide, in terms of sort of what are we doing in relation to trying to help people get jobs, one of the ways is for people to register and work in Texas. And so when they file for unemployment, we advise them that they can apply or sign up and work in Texas, at which point they will be getting, you know, job postings and, you know, leads to training opportunities and those types of things. And so out of the 3,600 folks that were reflected in the previous, one of the previous slides that filed for unemployment in this county, approximately 2,445 of them have actually registered and work in Texas. So they're actively looking to go, you know, back to work. Now, some of the numbers associated with employment and unemployment is a little lagged. So, for example, when you look at that 3,600 number, we won't know how many of those folks actually got back to work and who specifically until probably two quarters, because the way that information is reflected is based on employers paying the taxes on those individuals to actually, you know, and report that, they report that every quarter to the state. So we're a little bit lagged in numbers. What you can see, though, is that the unemployment rate actually has gone down, and so that's good news from the perspective of what's happening in relation to this crisis.
Now, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this job seeker registration that's with the workforce?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So under the next slide, you'll see job postings. So while we have seen the unemployment rate continue to decrease, the other thing that is still consistent is that there still are jobs out there. So not all that's lost, there are still employers looking for people to actually hire. And so you'll see on the left-hand side, some of those employers with the highest number of postings. And so the difference between postings and job openings is you may have one posting, but actually have five actual openings. So it could be one position, but you have actually five different openings. So that's the difference between the green and the blue charts there.
And where does this information come from?
This is also coming from what's in Work in Texas, as well as we're looking at other types of databases like Indeed, Monster.com, and some of the others. We provide that information to the public on a weekly basis, because we want to make sure that people understand that there are jobs out there that, you know, people want to come back to.
So if somebody's looking for a job, go to your website, they're going to find these postings?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. For workforcesolutionsalamo.org, we do have a section that actually is dedicated to what we're calling our Jobs Now Initiative. And so they'll see on a daily basis new postings that we're always putting on there. So that's in very easy ways, so it's a great question.
Absolutely.
So that's my last slide in relation to this part of the presentation. I'll answer any questions that you may have in regards to unemployment numbers and unemployment rates. Again, there is, you know, there's some good news. We're moving in the right direction. We'll see what the fall brings to us in relation to COVID and all that, you know, it could always spike up again and then probably affect the economy as well, but we're moving in the right direction.
So on your job postings chart, that's just, that's not comprehensive, I mean, complete?
Correct.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Indicators are what you want to call it?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it's just a real quick snapshot of the number of postings per month.
So if an employer wants to get on this list, what's that process?
Yeah, you can just reach out to us on our website. We actually have two, we have three main buttons. Job seeker, somebody looking for work. Employer, employer wants to work with us in relation to, for us to find them, some folks who do put postings, that type of stuff. And then I think the third posting is everything else. I'm very sure of that.
Oh, yeah, what we do.
Yeah.
We are.
So, but yes, we would encourage employers to work with us, because we do have the database for all 293,000 folks who have filed for unemployment. And we're consistently sending out, you know, new job opportunities, new training opportunities, you know, other types of sort of opportunities for folks. And so we're using that very actively. And some of the stories we do hear from employers is that they have postings and are having trouble trying to fill them. And so some of that was a reflection of what was happening with people's unemployment status. So people were receiving unemployment plus a $600 enhancement. The Congress had passed that enhancement expired at the end of July. So in some instances, you know, some folks were actually making as much, if not a little bit more than what they were if they were working, right? So that affected people's willingness, to a certain extent, to come back to work. There's been a recent enhancement that the president authorized recently, was $300. Not everybody who was unemployment received that $300, and if they didn't apply within the first couple of weeks, they actually are not eligible to work, because those dollars are going to be gone pretty soon, as far as a six-week period. So we think that, you know, if we keep pushing, that there are postings, that there are jobs opportunities, that, you know, we'll start to actually be able to help out employers and that pretty much more comprehensive than that.
I see that the city of Kerrville's on here, the county's not. Maybe that's something we should look at.
Sure. Let me, we can take a look at that.
That's the reason I was asking, just a sampling.
Yeah.
There's some obvious misses.
Yeah. So if there's no, go ahead.
Do you at all track people that come to the area looking for work that aren't already here? Do you have any?
So employment from, it's coming from. So employment from, it's coming from, that's a great question. I don't think we do, but that question tends to come up a lot, especially as it relates to some of the counties that are like, for example, very heavy in manufacturing, so while the Rube, Comal, you know, Bexar County, even Medina County, you know, what happens sometimes is that, yeah, they land a big fish or a big company coming in, but then they're actually bringing in people from the outset. So the local folks may not be, you know, taking advantage of that. That could be because of education and training and those types of things. But I don't think we track that though. So the next part of the presentation is on our local plan update. And just to give you some background, in terms of the next slide there, is our local plan is basically our strategic plan that we have to set out every four years, outlining what our priorities are, what our industries that we're working with. We certainly work with all industries, but we don't work specifically with targeted occupations that actually pay more because, of course, our job is to try to give people, you know, off public assistance and put them in a job whereas if they have a sort of career path. So one of the things that we've identified as the next sort of kind of framework for the next local plan is to talk a little bit about the state of workforce. Because state of workforce is not just about what Workforce Solutions Alamo does. Obviously, labor comes from many different parts, right? So K through 12, kids getting educated in the local ISDs, community colleges, you all have community colleges here, the kids graduating from those labor unions, as well as many other types of sort of kind of partners. And so the intent of the local plan is to figure out, you know, what are we doing, or what's that status today and what's happening at the national, the state, and all the sort of the different partners in this ecosystem. One of the questions that we are, and the reasons we're going to each of the commissioners' courts is to start to ask about what is your community's priorities? We want to make sure we're capturing that in this local plan because we want to align dollars in our priorities along with your priorities, right? So as I mentioned earlier, some communities are promoting manufacturing, or are promoting oil and gas, or are promoting other types of industries, right? And so it's important for us to understand what that looks like and be able to make sure that we're aligning our resources in relation to any of those priorities.
What is your working relationship with economic development organizations like Per Economic Development Foundation and the city with their 2050 plan?
Yes, so definitely, we work closely with them from the perspective of whenever, for example, there is a lead for, so I know like, for example, in this area, aerospace or manufacturing in that regard is a big priority. We do work with, trying to make sure that when there's a new lead to talk about potentially a new company moving in, we provide them information and data associated with the labor market so that people can start to understand where they can pull from to be able to make sure that they're going to meet those needs. So we work in that regard, but we also work in other regards, like there are, I believe just recently, there was a small grant for approximately about $80,000, don't quote me on the actual number, but it's a partnership with one of the local hospitals here and one of the training providers, I think in this case it was Hallmark and the local school district. And the intent was, we applied for dollars to the state, that those $80,000 is to purchase equipment to be able to train youth to go into the healthcare industry, right? So it's situations like that and circumstances like that that we try to work closely with, you know, each of the communities. Of course, priorities change, right, throughout the years, and so we just want to make sure and check back with each of the communities to make sure that we are, you know, aligned with those priorities.
Okay, good, good deal.
So under the next slide, you'll see some of the largest industries, for example, that we currently, you know, see as well as the ones that are going to be potentially growing. So we're still seeing a strong construction industry, accommodation and food services is going to take some time, right? Now, this is pre-COVID, actually, but food and accommodations is one of those larger ones, manufacturing and others that you see listed here. So the intent, again, of the local plan is to, we take a look at what are our industries today, what is the projections for the next four years. Of course, some of that is a little bit confusing and some of that is a little bit tenuous, given the fact that we're still living in the pandemic and we still haven't gotten out of this crisis. But the intent here is that the plan will start to look at those again and then try to match again what your priorities are. Under the next slide, one of the ways that we want to seek your feedback is through surveys. Again, talking about economic priorities, what do you think are in-demand occupations for your county? We certainly can pool that data, but sometimes that data is lagged, right? It may be a quarter or two lagged. So you may actually be, you know, a firsthand witness to sort of understanding like, hey, nobody knows this just yet, but there's going to be another whatever HEB, you know, constructed is going to create, you know, so many new jobs. It's that type of information that we think is necessarily what we want to make sure we capture in this particular plan. And so what we intend to do is to actually send out the survey to the counties, the cities, and then, as Commissioner mentioned, some of the agencies like Economic Development Foundations and the Economic Development Corporations of each of these communities. Under the next slide, you'll see some of the categories that we're going to be focusing on. Out of our $100 million budget, about 70% of our budget is dedicated to childcare or childcare subsidies. In large part, that's to be able to give people the opportunity to actually go back to work. So on a daily basis, we are providing childcare subsidies to about 13,000 children throughout the region. That gives parents the ability to go back to get educated, to get trained, or back to employment. On a monthly basis, that for those 5,700 families or so that are receiving those subsidies, they're generating about $14 million of income on a monthly basis, right? So when people ask, well, what are we getting for that $100 million investment or that $70 million investment, you're getting about $14 million coming on a monthly basis for those 5,700 families. Our other focus is on youth and providing things like internships, work experience, some after-school programs and career pathways. And obviously, we'll work with adults. We also work with special populations, including those that are disabled, those that, you know, were, for example, foster youth or veterans. We work very closely with those populations. And then, of course, we want to reflect what is the community data for rural versus urban because we do understand sometimes that there are challenges associated with that and, you know, sometimes stress associated with that. So lastly, on the last slide is our methodology is that we're going to collect quantitative data and look at, you know, as we move forward to identify which industries we're going to be supporting, is looking at a sector-based partnership model, which means that, you know, that we're work hand-in-hand with those industries on a frequent basis to make sure that we are actually meeting their particular demand for employment. But also look at, you know, the other institutions that we need to work closely with, such as K through 12, economic development organizations, human service organizations, and obviously private industry. So this is my last slide, you know, answering the questions you may have or anything that you think that we need to be able to consider as we start to put this plan together. The timeline associated with this plan is to, you know, seek feedback from the community in the next couple of months, probably start to have a draft by December that we will provide to the area judges, probably into what's called a committee of six, which is another sort of body that the actor reports to, in time for us to seek feedback and finalize the plan around the February timeframe and submit it to the state in March of next year. So answer any questions or seek any feedback that you may have.
And for those of you who don't know about the committee of six, that's associated with AICAP.
Yes, okay.
Good.
So there'll be 13, there could possibly be 13 different claims?
Correct. Yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head. That's exactly right. What we would like to do is one overarching plan, but we want to sort of take a look at what are each of the communities', you know, needs and what are their priorities, right? Take a look at that much more closely. I think we've done that in the past. Certainly, that was one of the charges to myself when I took this position about 10 months ago or so, because we think we probably could reflect a much better sort of work in what that looks like in each of the communities.
Now realistically, are they more regionalized or are they really individualized?
In some instances, there are some overlap and regionalize. Obviously, as I was mentioning on the unemployment numbers, labor is exchanged from one county to the next, right? And so, and in some instances, for example, you know, the, like, there was an announcement last summer regarding a manufacturing company that's going to be building these tractor-trailers in the San Antonio region. I think it's located in Shirts, but it's, but obviously, the impact is going to be for San Antonio, for Siquee, for Bronfels, that whole area is going to take advantage of that one particular announcement.
Very good presentation.
Thank you, sir.
I want to speak. Last time we talked was several months ago, back in July, and our numbers were spiking. We were in trouble. We were talking about ransomware back then.
Yeah.
I mean, we got off to a rocky start on all this, and this is very encouraging, very optimistic. Good news, good well-being.
Thank you, Judge. I appreciate it. Thank you again for the opportunity, and we'll be in touch. And, you know, if there's anybody that you would like for us to speak to, whether that's an employer or whether, you know, the economic development organizations or wherever, we're always open to that. Lastly, I want to make a quick announcement and introduce Linda Canizales. So I brought on Linda just about a couple of months ago, and in my commitment to you, Judge, and to these communities, I mentioned to you I was going to come back more often. And so Linda is now our Public Relations and Government Coordinator. And so when I can't get ahold of me, or you can't, you know, get in touch with me, or I can't make it, Linda's going to be able to come. So Linda, introduce her.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Again, Linda Canizales, and the new Public and Government Relations Coordinator. So one of my biggest passions is storytelling, not only about individuals and organizations, but about communities, because that's where the good positive change happens. So I look forward to assisting from a marketing and communication standpoint and assisting with any efforts that you all might have. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming up. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Moving on, item 1.3 on the agenda is Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Regarding Enrollment in the Texas Association of Counties Cybersecurity Course for Counties. Mr. Matherall.
Yes, this is our annual cybersecurity classes that we need to take every year.
And every individual, everybody has to sign up and take it all?
We're doing them again.
This is that thing you pester us about.
That's right.
And what is that? It's June, isn't it?
Yeah, it has to be completed by June of next year.
By June, okay.
So we can start looking at it.
So this is the first NAG? This is NAG number one?
Yeah, exactly.
It really doesn't take very long.
No, it doesn't, and it's worthwhile.
But you got to remember to do it.
Yes.
Thanks, Bruce.
That's what I ask.
Okay. So we don't have to take any action on that, we just have to do it.
Yes, indeed, of course.
Yeah, we have to take action.
Okay.
Individually.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Galu, to approve a court order for all, the entire county to enroll in the Texas Association of Counties Cybersecurity Course. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five zero. Item 1.4, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Discuss the President's Memorandum on Deferring Payroll Tax Obligations Due to the COVID-19 in Light of Treasury Guidance. Ms. Doss.
Good morning, gentlemen. Yes, the U.S. Treasury provided some guidance. It's a lot of verbiage, but under our perspective section, they say unless and until Congress enacts a payroll tax holiday, the potential benefit to employees under Notice 2020-65 is quite limited, and any benefit comes at the cost of significant administrative challenges and tax risks to employers. As such, we expect most employers will disregard Notice 2020-65 and instead continue to satisfy their payroll tax withholding obligations in normal manner. Now, I have heard some people concerned missing out on this opportunity. They also say that they do not see any real risk that employees might miss out on a meaningful benefit if their employers choose not to implement the tax payroll deferral under Notice 2020-65. If Congress ultimately enacts payroll tax holiday legislation, affected employees should be able to recover any overpaid payroll taxes by refund claims or other procedures that may be established under such legislation. So with that being said, I think that we are, it is within our authority to say that we're not going to offer this. Because as they said, you know, most employers will disregard it because it's just...
Do we have to take action one way or another?
I think we should take action that we're not going to offer this.
Didn't we already take action that we weren't going to do?
We took action that we weren't going to do anything until there was further guidance. And now we have further guidance.
And the further guidance gives us discretion to go.
Correct.
I move that we not, hit me with the words here.
Not offer the payroll tax.
Right, not offer the payroll withholding tax.
At this time.
At this time.
Is that the, not, that we not do the deferral program?
Correct, and it's only for the rest of 2020. So we're only talking the next three months.
I think it says it is payroll tax deferral under Notice 2020-65.
There you go, good amendment.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Moser and seconded by Commissioner Harris to not adopt the payroll tax holiday deferral at this time. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five zero. Item 1.5, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Approve the Grade and Step Schedule for Fiscal Year 2020, 2021.
Yes, this is, there have been no changes, as there's been no COLAs, so this grade and step schedule has not been, is the same as last year, basically no changes.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Letts to approve the step and grade schedule for fiscal year 2021. Is there any discussion?
Well, is that, is that going to change anything in the budget?
No.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget. It's in the budget this way because we hadn't done anything yet. I just want everybody to get clear on that because we have not entered into the study and we not got a report from the study.
This is not the study.
And technically, this should be part of the budget, I believe. So should we not, does it need to be a budget amendment to include it? Or can we just approve it?
There's been no change, why would it be?
Because it's adopted each year.
Probably just for the record to have a clean record of the W.
So is that a court amendment?
If necessary. We don't know that, at this point, we're not sure that we need to do that, right?
Yeah.
But it doesn't hurt to do it.
Nope. Yeah, it doesn't hurt.
Is there a motion?
Now, Chuck, we're waiting on that.
I make a motion to approve the grade and step.
For 2020.
Does it exist?
For 2020, I present.
Second.
2021, right.
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Letts and seconded by Commissioner Moser to approve the grade and step schedule for fiscal year 2021. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand.
Did we vote on that twice?
We didn't take a vote. There was a, there was a motion by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Letts. So unless you amended it or he withdrew his motion, I have Commissioner Harris with Commissioner Letts.
I'll retract my motion.
I'll retract my second on your motion.
Okay. Then make the motion here.
And so what was the actual motion and second?
It's to approve the...
It was to approve the grade and step.
By you, seconded by?
Commissioner Moser.
Thank you.
That's confusing.
But it's done. We've had worse than it was recently.
But it's done. Anything else, Ms. Doss?
Uh, that's...
1.6? Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Renew the 2021 Retiree Medical Program with United Healthcare Plan.
Yes, sir, this is just our annual renewal. The rates did increase, the medical by $9.47 and the prescription by $10.02, and I recommend that we just pass this increase along to the retirees.
So move.
Second.
That increases monthly?
Yes. And so our contribution...
So about $19 a month?
Correct, and our contribution will remain the same.
And these, this is a discussion, these are in the budget already, this amount, we're not changing what's in the budget. We'll probably look at this next year. There were some options on this, and I went through it, others went through it, general went through it. We may want to look at next year. I don't know how we get feedback from the retirees as to what they would prefer. There's some plans that are using all generics that are a whole lot... There's some plans that are using all generics that are a whole lot, that we will pick up all the entire cost, based on what we're doing right now. But it's something to look at next year. I don't know how we go about...
Put the word out there.
Getting feedback. Maybe we just do it.
Facebook.
Now, I'd like to clarify, who made the motion, who made the second?
I made the motion.
I seconded.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Letts, to approve the 2021 Retiree Medical Plan with United Healthcare, as presented.
As recommended.
As recommended, which is to pass through the medical and the prescription. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
1.7, Update from the County Auditor and County Attorney Regarding the Implications or Effects of Terminating the Kerr County Declaration of Local State of Disaster.
I think the only question that I was asked about was whether or not the, if you rescind the declaration, whether or not that would affect the county's ability to take advantage of some of the grant funding for the CARES fund. And we asked the Texas Division of Emergency Management, Daniella Scott. She responded that a local declaration is not required unless it's necessary for your local procedures. It's not required by TIDAM for CRF funding, so...
Well, I think we were really talking about a little bit broader scope, just to make sure that we knew what the consequences might be if we terminated the disaster order. And I saw some, an email that you sent out, and a conversation we had with Chuck Imbrough, which I think we ought to share.
Okay. Chuck said, you know, I told him what Ms. Scott said with TIDAM, and he said...
So to begin with, just so everybody knows where we are, technically, TIDAM tells us no consequence, okay?
Right.
And then we talk to our private counsel, and he says...
He says, if it were me, and I was going to apply for some money, I'd want my shoes shined, my eyebrows trimmed, I'd be wearing a tie and my very best suit, and I would want to, to put my best vote forward, which would, to him, mean keeping the declaration in place.
For the public, TIDAM is Texas Department of Emergency Management.
Yes, sir.
So what he's telling us is that he would recommend that we keep it as a best practice.
Yes, sir. And if it's not burdensome, if keeping it's not burdensome, then, then why not? Somebody asked a question earlier that I think I can appropriately, it was Mr. Warren, I believe, I can appropriately respond to that at this time, that the hazard pay that was approved by rescinding the declaration, that would stop also. So there, there's the answer to that, if y'all...
Kind of right me there.
Exactly. So basically, it's the same thing we've been saying all along, we need to keep it in place because of ongoing issues with the grant and everything else.
Well, that's technically not on the agenda today, well, we're trying to, what is, is, is there any adverse impact if we, if we discontinue and terminate the disaster order?
The answer is maybe not.
Maybe.
Maybe, maybe not.
Well, that's sometimes, that's the best answer.
And it's not been, I don't, I haven't seen it be terribly burdensome to have in place. Having it in place, this goes back to another thing that we've talked about multiple times, gives the judge the ability to use the emergency powers, although those have been limited during this time, just, y'all just thinking back what the governor has done, there may be a time that that is appropriate, and this being in place gives him that ability, as we do.
Well, the governor's now tying all of this to hospital regions, which are unclear in my mind what that even means. I don't know if you saw his press conference Thursday, but that's changed, now they keep moving the goalpost around, now what are we trying to pursue?
Well, my perception of what he did with that, Commissioner, is they're using the hospital districts, which is heretofore has not been the metric that we've used.
Right.
Because, in order to be able to...
Not because, but what is it? What is that hospital district? Do we have, do we have specific direction from his office?
Oh, the state of Texas has...
We know where our hospital is, but he's talking about hospital districts and did not define that.
The state of Texas has hospital, specific hospital districts.
Okay. What is ours? I guess I'll have to look that up.
But...
Because he did not make that clear, or even tell you how to, how to manage it.
Well, it's just part of state government.
It was the first guy I've ever known of it.
But it's part of state government.
Well, it is defined by...
And what he was trying to do was customize by regions, because on, on, on the, in Valley right now, and on the Red Land River, they're having a blow up, and so they need to be treated differently than where we are, or North Texas.
Or Amarillo, or whatever.
Amarillo, right.
So you mentioned there could be some adverse effect. The only one you mentioned was that there would be no hazard pay for Sheriff or Emergency Services.
Also, that it would take away the judge's ability to, to take advantage of the powers that he has under a disaster declaration immediately. I mean, y'all could always come back and declare a disaster again if those were needed or necessary.
Well, when we, when we enacted that, or declared that, or just, the, there were two things. Number one was that, and this was back in March, March, was a gun to alarm the public, and so far, that has not done that. Number two is, we wanted to do that too, because there were some tax, tax implications if we were under emergency declaration, and that's gone away. So both of those things seem to have gone away.
That was, I remember when they, with the disaster order in place, it gave us the, the opportunity.
To avoid the three and a half percent.
Right, right, which didn't apply to us. And just for purposes of clarification, we've been in lockstep with the governor through this whole thing, I haven't exercised a single power, we are saluting and taking orders. So do we have any action to take? I think I'm just a report briefly.
That was just a report, yes, sir. Unless James has something to add.
Anything to add for...
He told me he was excited about adding something to today's conversation.
Okay, very well.
He's always excited about anything.
Let's, let's wrap up a few things. We've got, we've got a short executive session, let's just kind of press through here. Move on to the approval agenda, 2.1, Pay the Bills.
Payables for the Court's consideration are as follows. Kerr County, $134,397.7. Airport, $272.90. Fund 32, TDA grant, $1,116. Fund 68, debt service, $550. Fund 78, county clerk fees, $218.62. And Fund 95, the 198th DA Court, $291.29.
And then you added, we added one more, didn't we?
Uh, it's a late bill, yes.
Oh, it's a late bill, okay, good. So you made a move, motion to, Pay the Bills is presented, and seconded by Mr. Letts. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Budget amendments?
Yes, we have eight today, one for the county judge, two for non-departmental, one for hazard pay related to COVID-19, one for county court of law, district clerk, jail maintenance, and park maintenance.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Letts, to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Late bills?
Uh, we do have one for adult probation, uh, it's multiple bills for the adult probation department, totals $9,462.5.
Who made the motion? Motion made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Harris. Pay the late bill, that's presented. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Auditor reports? Okay, monthly reports? Orders?
Yes, we have the court orders from 14th September, 3830, 538326, that all look to be in order, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Letts, seconded by Commissioner Harris, to approve the orders as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five zero. Information agenda.
We did have an audit.
There is one in our hands here, but there's none here.
Here you go.
Okay, let's go back to auditor's report.
Go for approval.
Here it is, Dan.
Oh, the monthly report, yes. I thought that was auditor reports before the term of audits.
No. That's what I... This is, this goes under monthly reports, probably not auditor report.
Correct. Well, let's just go ahead and approve the monthly report then. You made your motion?
Yeah, I did.
I seconded. Motion made by Commissioner Moser, I seconded to approve the monthly report from the auditor's office. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Was that on item 2.4 or 2.5?
2.4.
2.4. Okay. Item 3.1, Status Reports of Department Heads. 3.2, Status Reports of Electeds. Mr. Reed.
Good morning. I wanted to bring the court up to date. You may have seen a press release that my office issued last week. On Tuesday, September 15th, the Supreme Court of Texas, in a case that's styled regarding the Green Party of Texas, had out, ruled that not only it will affect Kerr County, but the other 253 counties, that three candidates for the Green Party were left off the ballot and should be placed on, how you may ask it, how it affects us. We had 20,000 ballots sitting on the loading dock, ready to be delivered, which, according to the Secretary of State, the county will have to absorb that cost on reprinting. It also, ballots to citizens and servicemen serving overseas had to be sent out by last Saturday, that did not change the date. We, through emergency ballots, were able to meet that deadline, but we had already begun to send some of them out. We've initiated all of the, the protocols for corrected ballots on that. The estimated cost probably will be someplace for the ballots that had already been printed in the neighborhood of $10,000. Through our budget, I believe I can absorb it with this fiscal year, what was left over, and the next fiscal year. We are also working with the auditor's office for grants through a foundation that's available, but I have nothing concrete whether that will come up or not. The other implication, we were hoping to send the ballots by mail to those that qualified out this week, and so that is on hold. Our vendor, there's only three vendors in the state that print the ballots, they're the only ones certified by Secretary of State. They did an outstanding job getting us the emergency ballots. They must have had everybody working all night to get those so we could get them out. But I did want to make the court aware now, rather than later, a potential shortfall in the budget, where we haven't even got into the new fiscal year.
What vendors do we use, where are they located?
We use HART, which is one of the three that are certified for the security of the ballots. And they were literally scheduled to leave there where else, Thursday to 17.
This has no, no effect on the election day?
None on the election day, no, sir. What it does, it just, it slowed down our timeframe of what we're looking at. We'd been telling most of the ones that were calling in that for information on when the ballots by mail would be sent out would be the end of the month. We're hopeful it'll be shortly into October, but we're at the mercy right now. My staff will put in the time that's needed to get them out the door.
Does anybody know what the dispute was really about at the Supreme Court to have this significant, a last-minute decision come to us?
Um, I have not seen the entire opinion from the Supreme Court. The basis of it was a law passed in Austin in 2019 that minor parties would have to pay a filing fee, just like the major parties did. The court was not in dispute that the Green Party did not pay the filing fees in violation of the law, but the law did not have a deadline when those filing fees should be paid. So, yes, they didn't pay them, but since there was no deadline, they allowed that to come on.
Sounds like a hair split to me.
You know what I say about being passing the bar, Judge?
Yep.
So I'm not going to comment on that. So I just wanted the court to be aware, and especially if you receive calls from constituents why the ballots by mail have not gone out yet.
Well, you've done a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other elected reports? Then 3.3, Status Reports of Liaison, Commissioners.
I have one as a HR liaison to kind of clarify. Kerr County has a longevity policy that applies to all employees, all elected officials, all department heads, that has to be done for us to have this policy, everyone's treated the same. All employees, elected officials, and department heads that were due to get a longevity increase got the longevity increase. That is why some elected official salaries might have gone up slightly, some department head salary might have gone up slightly, and some employee salary went up slightly, but it was per our policy that we were required to implement uniformly across all of the pay by Kerr County.
But other than that technicality, there were no raises across the board?
Correct.
Just, just to clarify.
So I ticked off one of those comments. But I've heard that from a number of other people as well, so I think it is important to clarify.
As a matter of fact, there was editorial on that subject.
Yeah, and the way maybe it was portrayed in the paper, it sounded like a little different than what it actually was.
Yeah, a little misinformation, you think?
Well, every now and then.
Well, it is what it is. Okay, let's take about a 10-minute break. We've got an executive session, we're going to talk about pending, the possible litigations, and also about real estate with regard to Westbury Annex. We'll stand in recess for 10 minutes. We'll stand at recess for 10 minutes.